The following is the procedure for public comment and participation. Individuals wishing to speak on an agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign up card and sign the oath. Sign up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Next, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. And finally, all sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
The purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business and proper decorum must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and shall refrain from any action that disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meeting or hinders a council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend the proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings with shouting, fail to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted speaking time has expired, as these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meetings and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply, as cautioned, shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on the agenda item under consideration, and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from the chambers who possesses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's right created by the constitution, law, ordinance, or regulation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the City of Titusville City Council regular meeting October 14th, 2025 at 6:30 to order. Before we begin, I'd like to invite Pastor Paul from Calvary Chapel Titusville to give the invocation.
It's just my honor to be able to pray over this meeting. Reminded in the letter of James, the Epistle of James, chapter one, verse five, says this, "If any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives to all liberally and out of reproach, and it will be given to them." And so, Lord, I now pray over this meeting. Lord, I pray wisdom to the council. I pray peace in everyone's heart as we discuss and comment, but most importantly, Lord, we ask for your divine justice and your divine wisdom over this meeting. May your blessing fall on this time, your spirit be abundant, and your strength be outstanding in our decisions and our discussions. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of August 12th, August 26th, September 9th, and the special meetings on September 18th and September 22nd.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, council. And before we get to into the meeting, while everybody's here, I just want to take a moment to publicly thank Attorney Jim Stokes. It's been just an honor and a privilege to work with you. Your knowledge has been very much appreciated over these last few months, and we're definitely going to miss you. No offense to Miss Treasure, but we're definitely going to miss you. And so, I just, again, from the bottom of my heart, really appreciate it. Anybody from council have anything to add? Member Stokoe.
I'll keep this quick. He's still the attorney for Space Coast League of Cities, so you will not be far from reach.
Vice Mayor Cole.
Just thank you, Jim.
Member Nelson.
Dito.
All right. Again, thank you very much, City Attorney.
Well, it's been an honor. I'm glad I could help out through this time, so absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I've got his number on speed dial.
Yeah. City manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. We have no special recognitions and presentations, so move on to boards and commissions. Six A is Boards of Adjustments and Appeals, and the recommended action is to appoint one alternate member, public at large, to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for an unexpired term to expire on July 31st, 2027. There's currently one application on file for consideration. Mr. Nathan Rothel, public at large, has expressed their willingness and a desire to serve on the board as an alternate member with a term to expire on July 31st, 2027.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Member Nelson.
There is one. Stan Johnston.
Do you want to take that first?
Yep. Mr. Johnson.
Oh, I would.
Okay. Yeah, we're appointing.
Oh, okay.
Member Nelson.
Mr. Rothel appeared last meeting. I don't know him as Nathan. He is my neighbor. I know him as Emery. He actually came to me probably four or five months ago. He's retired. He was like, "I'm really interested in the city." And so, I said, "Okay, here's an application." And like I said, he filled it out, Nathan. So, he's not here tonight. He was here last week. I'm fine with that. He seems to be a great guy. He's always helping around the condos. So, that would be my motion to appoint him.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Nelson, second by Member Stokoe. And just point of information, the city clerk did notify me before the meeting that he did intend to be here, and unfortunately, something came up, but was planning on coming. So, you know, I think we hurt his heart at the last meeting. So, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. City manager.
So, moving on to I of six B is the Titusville Environmental Commission. Back in September 10th meeting, Member Browning made a motion to the committee to submit a one-page document outlining a vision of having a full-time urban forestry management planner and as well as recommendations for usage of the Urban Landscape Management Trust Fund. You may recall that we're holding a visioning workshop on November 10th as a series of workshops that are going to be dealing with urban forestry. And we, staff is recommending that that be combined, his recommendations could be combined with that process to ultimately come up with recommendations to council regarding the urban forestry management plan.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk.
Yes, sir. The first card is Laura Lee Thompson.
Laura Lee Thompson, MMS Florida. Thank you for considering repurposing the Public Landscape Trust Fund as recommended by the TEC at their meeting on September 10th. The trust fund to which TEC refers is outlined in Resolution 30-2001 that we passed out to you. The Public Landscape Trust Fund receives revenues from mitigation efforts stipulated in Section 30-34 of the Tree Canopy Protection Ordinance. This year, the city allocated $50,000 of the uncommitted balance of the trust fund toward a required match for an urban and community forest grant, which the city ultimately received. A consultant, EOC Environmental, was hired to help craft Titusville's urban forest management plan. The TEC's focus for the last year has included native canopy shade trees as primary infrastructural elements of our city's landscape. Trees are the workhorses of site development. We know that the right trees in the right place can significantly affect air and water quality and help minimize the need for expensive manufactured stormwater management structures. At the same time, large trees provide framework for the type of environment in which people and businesses thrive. The first community meeting for Titusville's urban forest plan is scheduled for November 10th at 5:30 PM here in the city council chambers. The urban forest management plan, it will heavily rely on our community for vital input to develop an actionable plan with a shared vision for Titusville's future urban forest. At the workshop, citizens will get an opportunity to speak with the consultants, recap results from a community survey, collaborate in breakout groups, and work to help formalize the future vision of Titusville's urban forest. There's a webpage about the project on our city's website. The address is titusville.com/3186/urbanforestplanproject. Staff recommends that TEC's request be considered as part of the development of the urban forest management plan. The Public Landscape Trust Fund should be utilized to implement measures that are recommended in the plan, including the salary for an urban forest manager, planting of tree canopy, and tools necessary to execute the plan. The Public Landscape Trust Fund collects money when trees are sacrificed during development. Shouldn't that money best be used to plant and manage trees in our city? So, here's that website once again. I hope everybody takes the survey and comes to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura Lee. City Clerk.
Kay Saint Ange. Kay Saint Ange, Maryland Avenue, Titusville Tree Team. The Titusville Tree Team is eager to attend the November 10 vision building workshop with EOC consultants to begin developing the urban forest management plan. At this meeting, residents will help formalize the future vision and goals of Titusville's urban forest. But tonight, I wish to thank you for considering TEC's recommendation to repurpose Resolution 3201's Public Landscape Trust Fund. These funds accrue when developers remove trees during construction without replacing them. There could be no better use of these mitigation funds than to utilize them for the urban forest management plan. This plan will serve as a roadmap to enhance and preserve our community's urban forest. Funds will be needed to plant trees on publicly owned lands, especially along streets, shading homes, sidewalks, and roads. Funds will be needed for an urban forester to implement the plan. So, let's use this Public Landscape Trust Fund to implement the urban forest management plan. Please adopt staff's suggestion to incorporate TEC's request to utilize the Public Landscape Trust Fund to implement measures recommended by the urban forest management plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. City Clerk.
The last card is Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston. I've been here over 50 years, and I'm a tree hugger. And I love trees. And I just saw some terrible things that's happened in the city of Titusville where people are just, just tear trees down just because they don't like them. They don't like leaves is some of the reasons. So, we need help, and we're getting a lot of promotion by Laura Lee and Kay Saint Ange. And I want to say ditto for what they're doing. They've been working hard to help this out, and they need your support. So, I'd like you to support what they have, what they're having, what they're asking you to do. I'm looking at a site right now called Elizabeth Oaks, which I think they took down all the oak trees, about 80 oak trees. And they saved it, they did save one tree. It's a pine. But now, they found out that they put it the wrong place, and it's on, it's on somebody else's property. So, I guess what I'm showing you is that people don't seem to really respect what they're doing. And I want you to consider that. It's, it's nice to breathe air. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. City Manager. A few meetings back, council gave direction for staff to put out an RFP for a landscape architect to design the entryways and our roadways with trees, correct? Your mic's off.
I believe so.
Okay. Where are we at in that process?
I don't have that information right offhand. Press Brad. We're going to use ACOM, which is one of our continuing services. They're scheduled to come in the next two weeks and ride around with our staff to look at opportunity areas within the corridors. And they should have a proposal back shortly after that.
Thank you. Because that was where the funds were coming from to pay for that was the Landscape Trust Fund, correct? Okay. And then, how much funds are left in there? Anybody else?
I don't know the exact balance of that fund.
So, just food for thought. I think we should see how much the landscape architect is going to recommend as they kind of go through and design everything as they're the landscape architect and expert, and we continue to move forward with community input, and then combine all three of those type of things together between the TEC, these urban forestry management plan conversations, along with input from the landscape architect as we move forward. So, those are my thoughts. Member Nelson.
I agree. And, you know, if we have money in the fund, at that point, when you guys come back with a plan, come back with an idea of how to use the money. Because I would like to see us put more trees in.
Thank you, Member Nelson. And I think the challenge of hiring somebody to do this is ongoing, occurring expense that will never end. And we can't predict year over year how much funding is going to come into that, that trust fund. I mean, economy can keep doing well, and people could keep building and unfortunately knocking down trees and funding that plan, but it's very possible that that could slow down as well. Vice Mayor Cole.
Yes, I think it would be beneficial to us if we move the Titusville Environmental Commission Landscape Management Trust Fund. We defer that until after we've had the urban forestry meeting. So, that would be my motion.
I'll second.
All right. So, I have a motion and I have a second. That kind of sprung up on me fast, guys, but I appreciate it. I wanted to make sure everybody had their say. So, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Cole to wait to see what input is from the plan. I have a second from Member Moscoso. Is there any further discussion from council? Member Nelson.
Vice Mayor, are we talking about deferring it until we have a plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, I clarified that motion okay. City Clerk, do you have that motion clear? All right. Thank you very much. Everybody understand what they're voting on? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys being here. City Manager.
Protestants have a question.
Okay. Protestants request non-agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Chaz Prickett. I live in Hickory Hill. This is coming up again. I've got your analysis here for your traffic impact, and evidently, it's incomplete, and I don't understand why, but I have about 60 hours with my people invested in the Chick-fil-A, the Culvers, Dutch Brothers, McDonald's, that have gone around the counties from Volusia all the way down south and counting cars in these businesses. We're looking at 2,000 cars a week on a residential street in Hickory Hill. This is not fantasy. This is actual reality if this goes through. Four weeks at 2,000 cars, if you do the math, is 8,000 cars a month, times 10 months, 80,000 cars on a residential street, not counting November and December, which is another 16,000. You're looking at 96,000 cars on a residential street within about 100, 150 feet of a traffic light, and this is only one side of the traffic light. Culvers is on one side. You have Highway 50 cutting the other two. And this is a residential neighborhood with children in it. All right? And there's also, I don't think your city planners, there's a 21-foot by 21-foot square that I don't think your city planners or your traffic people look at. If there's one car in that 21-foot square waiting on that light, it's a plug in a bottle, and nobody's looked at that. Also, with the Dutch Brothers, that property that's next to me, and I wish you guys would come by my house. You're welcome to come by. I'm the first house on the left as you come in, and you're welcome to come and look at this piece of property. It holds acres of water. When they start filling this in and start putting their concrete, fill dirt, everything else in, where's the water going to go? And who's going to be paying the flood insurance? This neighborhood's been here for over 60 years, and it hasn't flooded. If this goes in and it floods, do we have a contingency plan with the city to alleviate this problem? Because right now, it's on paper. You can stop it. You're the city. You're the people that caused everything to happen here. And if this goes through with these big multi-business traffic businesses, you know, the neighbors, you know, everybody, the voters, everybody in this neighborhood, there's thousands of people that have to go to work, that have to come home, that go to school, go to the doctor. You have the emergency vehicles that use this intersection also to cut through to 405 when there's problems. And you understand where I'm coming from. I don't, this is, it's important to me and to the people in the Hickory Hill neighborhood. And these two pieces of property at the end of the street, they're dead for construction. And I guess I'm out of time. So, thank you for listening to me. And like I said, if you guys wanted to come by my house and look, you're welcome to come by my house.
Thank you, Mr. Chaz. Member Nelson.
Chaz, I love the idea that you think we have loads of power. We don't. We have federal laws we have to deal with. We have state laws we have to deal with. And sometimes, our hands are tied. That property was owned commercial years ago.
I realize that.
And if we turn around and say, "Oh, I'm glad you bought it, and now you can't build on it," then we're in trouble.
How about putting one on the other side by Culvers, and then they don't have to deal with the Hickory Hill traffic?
We can't tell people where, where to put things. Yeah.
Thank you, Member Nelson.
Hello. Have a good one.
Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident. While my issue that I'm raising tonight may seem small, it's part of a greater issue. I nominated Stell Bailey for a community service award following the correct procedure. The recipient of this award is to be recognized for high level of service. The description of the award also clearly states the following. An award in frame certificate will be presented to the winner, and frame certificates will be presented to the other nominated individuals. Okay? Now, no one other than the winner was recognized at the city council meeting, and I think that's somewhat unfortunate, but there's nothing you could do there. However, in terms of providing a frame certificate to each person nominated, the procedure was absolutely not followed. Ms. Bailey never received a certificate, although the other five did so. I followed up with Wanda and Emily, and I was told that six certificates were sent to you, Andrew, to be signed. You signed and returned five of those certificates, but you never signed the one for Ms. Bailey. And actually, I heard a rumor that you shredded it, although I believe that's possible. I'm hoping it's not true. But I also think that Stell does a great service to the city of Titusville through identifying and exposing corruption. And Andrew, since you became the mayor through a totally corrupt process and continue to act with very little regard to honesty and integrity, I can see why you might not really appreciate giving Stell an award. But you have no right to bypass that policy and refuse to sign her certificate. In my mind, that's an example of very unprofessional behavior. So, I would like this resolved, and I would appreciate from you an explanation as to why you did not sign the certificate for Stell Bailey and what you're going to do to rectify this. You can answer me. Amazing. You know, and that's the, I just had the great pleasure of speaking with Mayor Diesel recently, and it was so delightful to talk to somebody who actually treats the citizens as they should be treated and cares about what they say, which clearly, you have no ability in that regard. Well, I think I will end up filing an ethics complaint on this because I have no other option as far as I can tell. I went to the trouble as a citizen to follow the policy, and I don't appreciate I went to the trouble as a citizen to follow the policy, and I don't appreciate your lack of professionalism.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Wright, 3550 South Washington Avenue. I want to thank Member Nelson, the mayor, and Mr. Cole for the approval of the first tranche. Megan, don't give me a dirty look. Maybe Sarah is doing the same thing. But I appreciate you guys to approve the first tranche that went through. But I have obviously another problem that I'm bringing up to you, and that's a packet that I've passed out. So, recently, I found out that shale station is now also been leaking underground for almost 20 years. So, we have shale station on Cumberland, Country Club, and Hopkins on one side and Cumberland Farms on the other side. And so, while looking at their report, environmental report, it says that the, the contamination benzene level is actually going through northeast. And I thought, well, that's where Santa Claus is in northeast, because, you know, the contamination always goes east to west. I'm sorry, west to east. So, I want to bring up to the, to this meeting, the approval of the TEC back two years ago that was unanimously approved for having the city to be involved. As of right now, the project is halted. We cannot go forward because the lenders are literally asking for the Phase One and Phase Two, and we have impurity. This used to be one contiguous lot, which has been all separated. That is number one that I wanted to bring up. I've got one and a half minute or one minute and 19 second. The second point that I want to bring up is the, we're planning on putting a Christian kids' school. Mr. Hector behind me is going to be coming up and talking about, he's already got a school in Orlando. It's, I believe, is one to 12. And Jazz and Ballet is moving out. They found another place. We have about 12,000 square feet in the, in the mall that we like to place them in there. And so, I'm requesting you all to give the staff the authority to go forward as far as changing the ordinance, which basically means having the zoning change so we can have schools in Titus Landing and my property and the other one down the street. I've already met with the city manager and, and also with Brad. And I'm hoping I have the unanimous approval of you guys wanting to have a Christian school, just like step by step, that is on 1923 Knox Cray McCray Drive. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jesse.
I'd like to ask Hector to come up with his partner now. Stand, sit down.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hector Sanchez. I'm the president of the TDR Learning Academy. Whoever don't know what, what is TDR is Tower of Refuge, Torre de Refugio en Español. So, we have a school K to 12 in Orlando. We started 2012 with six kids, and we got 105. And it's, it's going very well. I just moved to Titusville. I like Titusville. And I would like to open a school here. She's one of the board member, and I want her to speak a little bit.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for listening to us. I, as Pastor Hector Sanchez, we've been, I'm a founder as well of all the schools. We've opened six schools. He's very humble. He only says Orlando because that's the one he owns. But we founded six schools. Kissimmee, I'm opening one in Lake Wells. I have one in Hain City. Reborn Christian Academy is huge, 600 kids. And so, we've been doing this for a while. We like what we do. We love to see testimonies when kids come in and when they graduate, the end of the year. We like to see the parents go through a full cycle. You know, they don't get along with their kids in the beginning, and by the end, they, you know, they have a better relationship. And so, we're trying to just bring that to Titusville with what we do. I believe in the power of changing minds in the kids and, you know, restoring hearts. Not just that, obviously, teaching math, English, social studies, and science, and everything else that comes with it. But we, we believe in a full psych, a full, full cycle. And I believe that that is helping the parents, helping the children, and overall, you know, bringing jobs to the community and helping as, you know, Christian, in a Christian environment as, as we do. Do you have any questions for us? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brad, can you elaborate what the challenges are?
We received a request to establish a school in the urban village zoning district. If you recall, there are only three properties in the city that have that zoning district. Mr. Jesse Wright's property, Titus Landing, and one other location south of Cheney. Urban schools are prohibited in that zoning district. In order to allow them, the code would have to be changed with an ordinance by you to permit a school, whether it's private or public, inside that zoning district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parrish. Does council have anything? Member Nelson?
I don't have a problem with it.
Member Stokoe?
I'm definitely for the Christian school. I guess my concern is, my concern is that I've been concerned, and Jesse knows this, with how much is being proposed for this piece of property. So, I've heard hotel. I've heard apartment. I've heard assisted living facility. I've heard multiple things. And I, I guess I'm, I'm hesitant because I feel like we're losing a lack of vision for what that piece of property will look like. And I think that's part of the reason why things are zoned a certain way. So, if we look at Titus Landing, for instance, it's zoned that way, and then we can see the types of businesses that open up there. Restaurants, retail. My concern is if we start opening this up, I would want this school to be successful, but then I start thinking, okay, how is this going to work with a hotel on the corner? Then you have kids going in and out of a school. Where does the loop go? What, what does that piece of property then look like if we're just saying, have whatever goes on this piece of property? So, that, that's my hesitation, is I'd like to see, and Jesse knows this from previous conversations, of what is the overall vision for this piece of property, in that we're not just piecemealing it by, hey, we want to do this now, so we approve that. But then now, another piece changes, and then we don't know exactly what's happening on this piece of property.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Jesse, we're, we're having council discussion about what to do. I understand, but this, this is a hearing right now. We're going back and forth. Just please bear with us. Member Nelson?
So, Sarah, I understand what you're saying. I guess in my mind, I'm envisioning a hotel up here, a school in the back with a loop going around. Am I close? So, and you have apartments in the middle, which potentially, you know, potentially, you have kids that might want to be in those schools. So, you know, we, I know Jesse talked about having medical facilities there. Yeah. So, it's, to me, it's almost like having a mini-city.
Thank you, Member Nelson.
You don't like mini-cities.
Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would say that this is a lot without us having more information. And we typically don't do things this way. And so, I think we need to know, you know, what I don't like is that this urban village, it's not just one property. It's three different properties. And, and so, I don't know if there's an, an option for a CUP or something else. But I think first of all, we need to have more information on this project. We also need to know, we haven't had time to even look at it. What are the, what are the uses right now? And so, we can look at it. So, I think perhaps if we go through the proper channels of looking at this and you meet with the staff, and maybe they give us kind of an overview, instead of doing this in petitions and requests, we all might feel more comfortable moving forward.
And I think that's where I was too, is, you know, to see kind of gauge council's feeling on it to see if staff will, will do an analysis to provide us more information on, on this topic. City manager?
Sorry. I believe what Mr. Wright is aiming for is to get council to give an advisability for staff to research this, come back with options, and provide the information that council member Moscoso was asking for. So, if we get the advisability, we'll start using some staff time. We'll meet again with Mr. Wright, explore his vision, and see how it's compatible and what the options are, and come back to council.
Thank you, city manager. Member Moscoso?
How much staff time do you think this will take?
It's hard to gauge because every ordinance, you never know. There might be unintended consequences. So, we, sometimes they're simple, and sometimes unexpectedly, they may be difficult. So, it's hard to gauge how much time it will take. But we'll certainly meet with Mr. Wright to talk about what he's intending to do.
And do you typically do this when people come up with an idea? Walk them through all of these, the process? Or do you just say, hey, if you want it, if you want this use, you have to have a, you know, a change or land change or whatever? Or how do you typically do it?
So, what we discussed with Mr. Wright was that there are really two options. One is you can petition the city council to direct staff to research this and come back to you with recommendations, or even within just an ordinance, you direct us directly with to do that. The other option is to force the issue before you by actually submitting an application and proposing an ordinance for you to consider. And so, that, there's really two options that an applicant has.
And typically, we go for the second option?
We typically recommend that because that brings the question before you, regardless of your direction.
Thank you.
Member Nelson?
So, Tom, are you looking for a motion for advisability?
I believe that's what Mr. Wright is, is aiming for. We're just looking for guidance on how you want us to proceed based on those two options that, in this case.
I'm okay with advisability. And then to what Member Moscoso was saying, I'd really like to see, potentially, is a CUP possible as opposed to making a change to all areas that have this land use?
Yes. So, right now, schools require conditional use permit in all the zoning districts that are permitted. Or so, we would, if this goes forward, we would recommend the same in this zoning district. Just so you're aware, the last time that Mr. Wright asked for this, he actually took option two, which is to have, to submit an application with a proposed ordinance. And remember, that was the ALF. The assisted living facility was a specific use that was prohibited in that zoning district. He proposed it to be included in the zoning district with an ordinance that he drafted and presented to you.
Member Moscoso?
Sorry. And then, Mr. Wright, why haven't you moved forward with the CUP?
The CUP is not required yet because the use is not even permitted at the moment. If, if you want to go forward with this, we would recommend that.
Okay.
All right. So, hold on. You're about to get your advisability, so just relax. It'll come back before us. Member Nelson?
Okay. Motion to approve advisability to look at potentially having schools in the zoning district.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second.
Can I, can I just get clarification on that recommendation, that or that direction? That is not to come back to you with an ordinance, but to come back to you with information, research?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. That was on the agenda. Does anybody have a like to speak on this?
Sarah, the, the school is going to be in the second phase. The first phase, as Jolene mentioned, has the hotel, apartments, restaurants, and the ALF. This is the second phase. Second phase is where we have the mini-mall right now. And because Jazz and Ballet is moving out, we have 5,000, 3,000, 4, 4,000 square feet. So, I'd love to have the school there. So, then at some point in time, we can put him in the second phase of the project.
And I guess my question was, I thought the second phase included retail. So, when you were showing this to us originally, it was having those things. And then when I said, what about retail? You said that would be in the second phase. But now, I'm hearing something else.
Well, so now, what I'm asking is to, for the retail, so that we can add additional, in addition to the medical and retail in the school as well.
Okay.
And, and right now, it basically is the minimal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Well, that was my first card. Mr. Johnson, would you like to say something? Any other, anybody else on this particular topic? All right. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Petitions, requests, non-agenda items.
Stan Johnson, I have three items. One is the, what Mr. Casey was bringing up. I want you to think about it this way. Let's suppose you got three cars going, going eastbound on, 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 on State Road 50, and they want to go to this restaurant. It's at the corner of Hickory Hills. So, what they do is they get in the turning lane. It turns green for them. They, they turn in there. And then what they, they come up to is, is a line of cars blocking the entrance to this restaurant. So, what it's going to do, it's going to back up. The cars that are, that want to go on 50 can't move because you'll have cars right out in the middle of the intersection. I remember when I was here, when they discussed it before, and they, it was mentioned of that they, that there's already a curb cut in Highway 50, and that someone was going to push it to see if, if DOT would give up, and let's, let's go ahead and have the entrance on 50. I want you to know, I've done numerous site plans, and I would never do it by going into this road by making a little quick turn on, on Hickory Hill Boulevard, and then making another little turn and going into the restaurant. It makes no sense at all. It's just going to back up traffic horribly. So, you need to go ahead and, and correct it. And that's number one. So, that's what I want to mention there. Number two is this, this right here that you've got, right? Okay. She says, and so does Tom have this. So, what this is, is, is you see, is this is, this is what's been going on for over four years, is that when this was approved by council in 2021, apparently, you guys did not know that there's no way to get a, an easement to the last house to, to, to say that it has access to the house. So, this last house on Michaelburg Lane has absolutely no access, is no, has no water and sewer utilities. I talked to Andrew, not Andrew, Ashley Smith, and she just sort of like just threw her hands up. What can she do? It should have never, should never be this. This is a problem that, that someone should, should fix. The third thing I want to bring up is that I was watching YouTube, and I saw on YouTube, you won't believe what I saw on YouTube. 1180 Greenwood Street, there's a puddle of sewer there, a puddle of sewer on a video of YouTube. You've got, guys got a nonsense. They got to stop this out. You should cancel YouTube, internet, or whatever, because it's making you guys look bad. Because what the city has done, they, they submitted a report to FDPE saying, this, there was no sewer there. City did that. So, it looks like, this is saying the city is committing fraud. This is horrible. You all need to do something about stopping this internet and so forth, about these videos and stuff being taken.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Lost my voice.
Sorry. Mayor, can I just ask for that address? Greenwood? What, 2022? Okay. Thank you.
Everything lasts forever on the internet.
Evening, folks. I'm still a fanatic on a display of the American flag. The flag is a symbol of patriotism and allegiance to whatever subject it flies in front of. The flag in front of the Department of Headquarters, 550 South Washington, is strongly displayed as viewed from North Washington or the Fire Department parking lot. The American flag should be on the viewer's left, which it is not. It may be if you're standing in front of the Fire Department entrance, the display is correct in front of the parking lot. The flag is showing patriotism to the Fire Department's parking lot. A simple solution to the embarrassing problem is to switch the flags or remove the state flag and fly the American flag, which has flown all over the country. Mr. Mayor, I leave it to you, your staff, and your council to correct the embarrassing problem. A lot of people don't really understand or have any idea about the display of the American flag. No matter, all they do is take it for granted that everything is right, which it is not, as it is right now. If you view it from North Washington or the parking lot, the flag is on the right side, which it shouldn't be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Member Moscoso?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, sir. I know that this is your, your third time coming. Before the meeting, I did speak with our city manager about this. And so, I, I would ask Mr. Bate if you wouldn't mind speaking to the issue.
Well, I spoke with Chief Estollis, who met with the gentleman, and he explained, we are correct. I just don't want to get into back and forth, but we are correct. But we are correct. We are displaying the flag correctly.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, petitions or requests from the public, non-agenda items?
Well, really, Thompson, MIMS. So at our last TEC meeting, we were challenged to study the Titusville Natural Resources Report and decide on our next project to work on. So we talked about different things, you know, and, and we were, we were like torn. What, what could the TEC focus on that could really benefit staff in the city council? So someone threw out wetlands on the table. And yeah, the TEC members liked that. Our wetland policies are a mess. And they've been like that since 2011. It all goes back to year amendments to the comprehensive plan that Titusville submitted in 2010. Those included future land use policy changes to the conservation land use category. Future land use changes were found to be in compliance and were intended to be consistent with proposed changes to the wetlands policies of the conservation element. However, the proposed changes to the conservation element were found to be not in compliance. That was due to the proposed major changes to the wetland policies. To deal with the state's objections, the city council decided to return to the existing pre-year wetlands language and abandon the proposed major wetlands conservation element changes. The Department of Community Affairs had stated that the historical way of protecting wetlands and their functional values was acceptable. So what Titusville has now is a troublesome mismatch, particularly between future land use policy 1.16.4, which contains major changes included in that 2010 year update, and the older conservation element language, which was reinstated. That's how we ended up with the subjective determination of property rights, which places a large and unnecessary burden on staff and you guys. I was, I watch you guys up here struggling with these wetlands issues, you know? And, and every single project is, is a different thing. And, or the deference of the city's land use responsibility to the St. John's River Water Management District's determination of the extent of the allowable impacts. The TEC would like to work on our wetlands policies to add consistency and clarification so that everything works together. But we can't do it without staff's assistance. So TEC is asking for advisability, for some staff time, so that we can work to try to straighten out our wetlands policies and make the future land use element and the conservation element work together so that you guys have clear, you know, instructions on what can be done with wetlands and not have to go through this, this interpretation every time you have a new development.
Thank you, Mr. Really. Member Nelson?
I like that idea. The wetlands, some of our policies have been a problem forever. And my, my thought is, we need to work on it. I know, one of the things that bothered me was if you have two pieces of property, one had three acres of wetlands, another had five acres of low endlands, you didn't consider putting up together. You considered them separately. So that has always bothered me. So I would love to see TEC staff work on this.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokoe?
Yes, this kind of, it's not the same thing, but it's similar to what I was planning to bring up in my council report, which is another advisability. And so I want to be mindful of it to see if maybe we can combine it. Just especially considering all the rain. And I've been out in different communities and seeing pictures and talking to people. And I mentioned this in my briefing is, and obviously, we have to have council approval. But advisability to make sure that our city doesn't become like the pictures that we're seeing specifically in Edgewater. I visited a neighborhood in Port Orange, and they literally told me the entire neighborhood, aside from four homes, has had water inside their homes. And I know that's not what we want to do. But also, staff has to go by the rules and regulations that we set before. So I would like to request advisability to give staff time to look into that, to make sure that that does not happen. I, I mean, even over the weekend, people in south end of the county, I saw they have a septic tank. Their toilets were bubbling because there was so much rain in their, in their yard. So I would, I would feel a lot more comfortable to make sure we're proactive to ensure that that does not happen, any of that for our residents. That is a motion.
All right, hold on.
Is that a motion?
I'm sorry. And, and that could include-
Can you clarify the motion, please?
Yeah, staff advisability to just look into our current rules and regulations that we have in our ordinances that account for development, to account for flooding, to account for wetlands, to ensure that, Brad, you can help me out here. You know what I'm talking about, because I mentioned it to you. Just to ensure essentially that our resident, that we're protecting the environment, that we're making sure we have enough capacity that homes, that they're being able to drive outside of their homes. And I know people will say, well, we never have this rain like this before. But there's only so many times you can say that, well, we've never had this before. We, we are starting to get it, and we need to plan appropriately for that to the best of our ability. So, yes. That's my motion.
I'll suck it in.
God bless our city clerk for having to write down that motion. All right, so I have a motion from Member Stokoe. I have a second from Member Nelson. Can I propose a friendly amendment? All right, so some of the issues that I see are folks that live in our city, but maybe the road that they're on is county. And so it necess, it might not be in the purview of what they're looking at. So I just want to include the surrounding little bits of Titusville because, you know, there's folks up on Dairy Road. Dairy is a county road, but they're our residents. And they're seeing the flooding happen on a, on a county road. So I want to make sure that folks on Singleton, Carpenter, Sisson, you know, we're, we're taking that into account with our, our advisability. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, because I know we have hard lines when we're looking within the city. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows about it. City manager, you have some data?
I'm trying to dense all these factors.
Yeah, yeah. So, so there's a motion for advisability for staff to look into, with conjunction with TEC, on what I would imagine, our stormwater management plan or policies regarding wetlands. Correct. And also include the county roads that go through our city.
I may have to come back to you for further clarification, but we could certainly look into this. We do have the natural resources report Miss Thompson mentioned for guidance. So we could look into that, work with TEC and come back to you.
Yeah, and really, I mean, the prime example is the gentleman that spoke regarding Hickory Hills. He has major concerns that if a development happens, and I want to make sure that us up here, we have appropriate rules in place that if a development happens on, you know, that piece of property is zoned commercial. So I want to make sure that they abide by certain rules that will not impact his home with flooding. But I don't know what those standards are.
It appears to me that you're asking for, for us to look into strengthening the requirements that we have now.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Member Muskoso?
Yes, and, yeah, like, like the mayor was saying, we do have roads like Westwood. It's half city, half county. And I was talking with Kevin about this earlier. How do we coordinate to get those roads fixed? And we have to do it with the county. But as Member Stokoe was saying, it's not even as far as Edgewood. It's here in MIMS. I mean, it's extremely close. What I would say is that we do have another workshop coming on up. And I think this one is on the fourth. I think this is the vulnerability assessment workshop. And I think we paid, yeah, GeoSynTech, how much should we pay them to do this? It was quite a large amount of money. And this is, I think, one of the workshops that I imagine they're putting it on. But this is actually going to cover a lot of those things. It's going to look at rainfall, storm surge, sea level rise, flooding, all of those things. So I don't know if we want to ask for advisability in addition to having that, or we want to look at that first and see what comes of it? Or these might be two different things.
I, I think they could be similar things. So I would anticipate those results coming back, and then staff looking at what those are, and then proposing potential changes for us, for ordinances. So yeah, I would see those together. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the workshop again is, or the, is on the fourth. It's kind of high level, looking at it, vulnerability in the assets that we have. So I think after that event, we can come back to you after we review the options and come back to you with clarification or-
Proposed potential changes or things that you noticed that we may need to look at?
I would hesitate to come back to you with actual recommendations yet. I would probably need to come back to you with findings.
Okay.
And then get further direction from you.
Yep.
Sounds like a special presentation meeting to me, if I've ever heard one.
Yeah. I just, and the other thing too, that I do get concerned about is like, what recourse do people have? So let's say that we do have regulations and we think it's fine, and then it's not. What happens? And, and that's where I get really concerned, so.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Vice Mayor Cole?
Yeah, I agree with everything that we've said about that because we need to be able to make intelligent decisions. Because, back to the gentleman talking about heritage with the water runoff. I don't think that, I think that we do have rules that protect the property owner. And when someone's putting in a piece of property, that he can't have runoff onto someone's property. Am I right, Brad?
Can't cause an adverse impact.
Okay. My, my second question is, we already have our AI software onboard right now for?
For single-family permits. We're still working on it for site.
But I'm wondering, is it broad enough that we can include something like this as far as our roads and drainage and stuff like that? Is it possible that that could go into that software? Or is it just sing strictly the single family?
It's, I believe it might be possible. We could certainly ask. Right now, the, the scope of work is just for site permits.
I'm just thinking, if we had a database with all of our roads and drainage and all that stuff in there, I mean, we would have to establish the database, obviously. But it would be so easy if that exists and we could use that for this type of purpose. Because what we're bringing up right now, I think, is very, very important to the city and the people that live in the city. So just, just look into that for me, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Muskoso?
So, Vice Mayor Herman, we do have the GIS. I don't know if you've had a chance, but it has all of our roads and drainage and a lot of that information. So I'm sure our staff is going to build upon that. But it's very helpful if you've had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, the GIS is helpful, but if you had it in AI, you could put the question in it, and you wouldn't have to do that kind of research.
You want AI to do all the work?
Of course. Even though I'm old, I'm still believing in water and things.
All right, go ahead and call the question. I had a motion by Member Stokoe. I had a second by, I don't remember at this point. But all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. City manager?
We're doing petitions, we'll move on to consent.
Anybody else for petitions or requests, non-agenda items? Oh, sorry. Just want to make sure we didn't miss anybody.
I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor, Council, community members. My name is John Scully, and I'm here on behalf of the Bovard Clerk of Court, Rachel Sadoff. Clerk Sadoff asked me to share a few words to recognize interim attorney Jim Stokes, who also serves as our contract attorney for our office. Over the course of his work, we've seen firsthand the professionalism, dedication, and thoughtful approach to many complex issues within the city. Qualities that have clearly benefited the city during his tenure. Clerk Sadoff also wanted to express her deep appreciation for the seat of Titusville, not only as the county seat, but as the home of so many employees and their families. The strength and success of our community matters deeply to our office, and we're very thankful for the individuals like Attorney Stokes, who contribute to that during his service. On behalf of Clerk Sadoff and the Bovard Clerk of Courts, we simply want to say thank you, Jim, for everything you do for our community and our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scully. Anybody else, petitions or requests, non-agenda items? Seeing none, city manager?
Yes, sir, moving on to consent. We have 10 items on consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of council wishes to pull for further discussion?
Member Nelson?
B.
Anything else? Seeing none, city manager?
So I'll go ahead and pull 8B, and I'll read the others for the record. Consent agenda item 8A, task order number MHTO005 for the City of Titusville reclaim aquifer storage and recovery well feasibility study. Approve the award of task order MHTO005 to meet and hunt an amount of $59,792 to provide engineering consulting services, including a feasibility study for an aquifer storage and recovery well to manage excess reclaimed water through both the storage and, and withdrawal capabilities, and authorize the city manager to execute the task order. 8C, award of citywide janitorial services contract. Approve the final scoring and award the contract to American Facility Services of Alpharetta, Georgia, and authorize staff to conduct the final, final negotiations with the firm not to exceed $225,000 annually. Additionally, authorize the mayor to execute the subsequent negotiated contract subject to the review of the city attorney, city manager, and purchasing and contracting. 8D, acceptance of the Fire Department FY24 staffing for adequate fire emergency safer grant for three firefighters, and accept the safer grant award and approve the associated budget amendment. 8E, water allocation permit. Big Dan's Car Wash Titusville Commons. Approve the issuance of a water supply capacity allocation permit in the amount of 18,298 gallons per day for the Big Dan's Car Wash development on Cheney Highway. 8F, change order, fire station's humidity assessment. Approve the change order number one to task order ACOM TO08, fire station humidity assessments to ACOM Incorporated in the amount of $46,044.25 for design permitting and construction phase services to fire headquarters, Fire Station 11, and Fire Station 13 buildings. 8G, fiscal year 26 Starfire Corporation contract amendment for the red, white, and boom fireworks display. Approve the requested six-month extension to the Starfire Corporation agreement for the provision of fireworks for the July 4th, 2026 event at a cost of $38,500, and authorize the purchasing and contracting administrator to execute the extension agreement. 8H, 2026 Medicare medical and pharmacy plan options for city retirees for January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026. Approve the 2026 Medicare supplement and Medicare Part D prescription drug plan renewal with Cigna, and approve the 2026 Medicare Advantage PPO plan with RX with Yamana for citizen retirees eligible for Medicare, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement documents upon review and approval from purchasing the city attorney and the city manager. 8I, award of contract, community shade stop. Approve the award of the community shade stop contract to SDV Services of Titusville in the amount of $37,900 for the installation of one community shade stop and associated bench, bike rack, and trash receptacle, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And 8J, live work units in the office professional zoning district. Approve of advisability directing staff to draft an ordinance permitting live work units in the office OP zoning district.
Thank you, city manager. City clerk?
Yes, sir, we have one card, it's Stan Johnson, for item A, D, and I.
Mr. Johnson, you know you can't wear that sign up here.
Why can't I wear the sign?
We went over it last meeting. Our city attorney said that that is against the rules.
Is, is that what you're saying? I can't wear the sign?
By council rules, signs are to be in the back. What I said is if you had a piece of clothing, like a T-shirt that was printed, that's clothing. That's not clothing, that's a sign. So that should be in the back.
So I'll take it off. It's attached to my shirt. Okay.
Mr. Johnson, please put your shirt back on.
Why? I mean, it was attached to my shirt. Why, why should I do this? Why, why should I do this? Because, uh, I don't know. It seems like to me is, is if I wear a sign, I'm allowed to wear a sign. Because that's, that seems like a new, it doesn't say that. There's no regulation that says I have to, uh, I can't wear a sign.
City Attorney?
So you're saying that I have to wear, I can't wear a sign?
People have to be fully clothed in the council chambers?
This was attached to my shirt even.
According to the council rules, people need to be properly attired.
How about according to the Constitution?
Just like, just like restaurants, no shoes, no shirt, no shirt.
Okay, how about the Constitution?
All right, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, I'll put my.
Please have a seat.
Okay. Can I start my clock now? Can I start the clock now?
No.
I can't start the clock. So I'm gonna have about two minutes is all on the left for, for these three items. Okay, I want you to look in the back there. There is a sign that says one hundred, one hundred seventy-six parts per trillion. So what you're gonna do is you're going, you, you're not gonna test the water and you're gonna, you're gonna put it in the ground without testing the water for, for poisons and, and so forth? Is that what you, that's what it plans to do, it looked like to me, because the city has refused testing for, for PFOS. Though we got a test right here, one hundred seventy-six parts per trillion.
Mr. Johnson, none of that is on the consent agenda?
It is right there. Number A. Can you, can't you read it? It says aquifer storage register, uh, uh, and recovery. That's what this is about. We're gonna take our reclaimed water with, with all the PFOS in it and so forth, and we're gonna put it underground and then it's gonna go to people's houses and then we'll use it later on for, for chlorination and so forth. Do you understand that, Mr. Connors? Mr. Connors, do you understand what I'm saying? No, you don't. Why don't you read it? Mr. Connors, this says, this says that what, what we're doing is a study. Now, what I'm saying to you, Mr. Connors, is it seems like you don't know what's going on. It says they're gonna pump our water back in after we, we've used it, after we put piss and poop on it and cleaned it up. Does anybody understand what I'm saying? I'm showing an objection to what, what you're gonna do. You need to test your water before throwing it down underground with all this PFOS and so forth in it. And then putting it back in this, into the system. Makes sense to me. So I had H, A, D, and a, so, so this is, this is an important thing that you, you need to consider. And that includes what I was wearing there. The sewage spills, so forth. We're, we're spending all this money on, on recovery and I only get two minutes for three items because I took off my shirt while it was attached to my sign. I think this is all unfair.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
It's all unfair. Anybody wanna say something? Maybe Muscoso say something.
No doubt.
All right, so that concludes the public comment for consent items. A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J. Member Nelson?
Move to approve those items.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Yes, sir. I'll go ahead and read eight B for the record. Purchase of response capable staff vehicle. Approve purchase of a twenty-twenty-five Chevrolet Traverse all-wheel-drive four-wheel, four-door, uh, response vehicle. Response capable staff vehicle. This vehicle will be purchased from Allen J Fleet Sales under contract five-one-seven-nine-dash-two-zero-two-five, City of Tallahassee. Purchase price on the quote is the amount of sixty thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Thank you very much, City Manager. City Clerk, are there any cards? Thank you. Member Nelson?
Chief, I had a question. I looked up the mileage on this vehicle and, you know, we have our sustainability plan. And I'm like, twenty miles to a gallon? Oh, my God. Is it possible to use a hybrid in its place? Or something that gets twenty-one miles to a gallon? Twenty-two?
Well, there's a number of reasons why using a hybrid is complicated when you talk about an emergency response vehicle with the amount of electronics that we have. But with this model in particular, I don't know what year you were looking at, but the, the year, the twenty-twenty-six model that we're talking about gets twenty-seven miles to a gallon. The comparable hybrid, that would be another option, just in a regular, um, uh, in a regular vehicle, not something you compare it to necessarily a, a, a emergency response vehicle. But something more comparable in the hybrid, the Ford gets thirty miles to a gallon. So the hybrid does get better, it gets thirty. This is, this gets twenty-seven. So I think it was last model year, the year before that, it was a V-six. Now they're all four cylinders.
Okay.
So.
To be fair, I think I looked at twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
So that might be it. But that was just my question. I was like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, it's a priority to me too. It's why we don't, I didn't spec it with a V-eight. You know, it's overkill. So I just want something that's gonna get the job done.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion from council? Seeing none, have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda item B.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, second from Vice Mayor Cole. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Sir, moving on to ordinances, second reading. Uh, nine A will not be heard. Be advertised but not heard, drawn by the applicant. So moving on to nine B is a right-of-way, uh, application. And here it is, the Orange Street. The conducted public hearing deny resolution number eighteen dash-two-zero-two-five vacating, abandoning, and discontinuing certain public streets for a portion of the Orange Street Public Right-of-Way. This item was currently tabled, was recently tabled and, uh, the applicant has requested to have it presented at this meeting. And Brad Parrish is here from Development to answer any questions. And the applicant is here as well.
Mr. Parrish?
Uh, on page three fifty, thirty-two rather, is the, uh, cover, the report to council. But on this, five thirty-four is of your packet, is the staff report. We reviewed the application based on the ordinance that was adopted in twenty-fourteen. They provided some criteria for us in the analysis. Uh, based on the information and the responses we received from the various agencies that may have an interest in this public right-of-way, uh, this, we received a few objections. And the Planning and Zoning Commission has already stated also recommended denial of this. This is based on, um, well, let me, I could point you to five thirty-six of your packet that if this is approved, we would recommend the following two conditions. And that is all required easements are provided as required by the city uh, for AT&T Southeast, Florida City Gas in the, and the city. Uh, and in any event that these are not, um, completed within a hundred and eighty days, then, then this resolution would be void. So if this is approved, we would have to have those conditions completed within that timeframe before it becomes effective. So to continue to be a right-of-way until such time that easements are completed. On page five thirty-eight, this is the application. You'll see the purpose from the applicant on the bottom of that page. Uh, the applicant is requesting to vacate the remaining portion of this right-of-way within Orange Street for the purposes of a construction of a commercial building. On page five forty-seven of your packet, you'll see one of the letters, specifically the one from our Public Works Department. And in there, I just wanna point out to you, uh, in the paragraph there at the bottom, uh, the Public Works Department does not contain, does contain various utilities in the right-of-way along the described area and requires an easement over the utilities for maintenance, access, and ingress. Egress. However, they are concerned that future development of the property could result in the developer being responsible for relocation of these utilities. On page five forty-nine, you'll see the aerial and a general location of where this right-of-way is located. Just so you know, that is not scaled. So the parcel lines are shifted. So there was a portion of this right-of-way that was vacated just west of what's illustrated there in red, in that red box. Uh, the history about that is the, at one point, the city approved that vacate, but then later asked for it to be returned back to the city. So there is an interest here to try and maintain this as a public right-of-way. With that, I'm trying to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. City Clerk?
I believe we have the applicant first. It's Bruce Moya.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um, this is a, got a lot of history on this one. It is kind of an unusual request. Um, but from what I can gather from the evidence that we've been able to obtain is that back in nineteen-seventy-four, is that the, the right-of-way was vacated from lots one to block, to lots five. So, and then what, but there was also, it was subject to a reverter clause that if the property was ever sold, that right-of-way would go back to the city. Property was sold at one point in time. So back in nineteen-eighty-eight, they reapplied to vacate the right-of-way for lots one and two. That was approved with no reverter clause. So you have a piece of, you have a right-of-way that has private property in the middle of it. You have right-of-way, public right-of-way to the west, public right-of-way to the east, and private property in between. My client owns lots three through seven. Uh, so at one point, if you recall, lots three through five was a vacated right-of-way and reverted back when that's the property was sold back in the early eighties originally. Um, when he bought the property, he was under the impression that he owned half the right-of-way. He was, he had no idea that that property had been reverted back. The survey that he was provided at the closing showed that he owned half of that right-of-way. Um, but upon further investigation, there was a, an agreement that some, I forget what date it was, that redefined that, clarified that that property did not own the right-of-way. That right-of-way was reverted back to the city. And it was not requested as part of that nineteen-eighty-eight, um, vacating. So even though that agreement exists, he, that was, he was not aware of it when he bought the property. So now he has a piece of property that, um, we came for a variance. If, um, I don't know if you're aware of this, we came and got a variance for, because this property is non-conforming to the rear. This is an existing building, it's existed for a very, very long time. It was actually part of the building to the north and the property got separated. So there's a zero setback because those buildings are actually touching. So not knowing that we had another non-conformity, because now we are non-conforming to the front because our building, the existing building is like half a foot off that right-of-way line, off the property boundary. Had we realized that, we would have probably included that in the variance. So at least you'd have a conforming piece of property. Because as you know, if you have a non-conformity, something happens to your building in a hurricane, you don't have the right to rebuild it. It's very hard to insure, um, a lot, a lot of issues, you know? And that's why we got the first variance, so that we'd at least be compliant. He put a lot of money into this property since he bought it. I don't know if you know what it looked like before, but he's, he's made it look very nice. Put a lot of money into it. It's rented. Uh, it looks way, a lot better than, um, than it did when he, when he first bought the property. And his goal from day one was always to do a, a small expansion of the property so that he could actually have a little bit more building to, to rent. Now he's, you know, since we had the P&amp;Z, we did more research and we, we actually got the, the updated title opinion. Uh, you know, he's got less property than he thought he had. He's now non-conforming. So the request was to vacate the right-of-way. So he can one, have the property back that he thought he had and allow him to do a small addition that he, that he would hopefully be entitled to do. Now, the, the, uh, there was a couple letters that were sent in the day before the P&amp;Z meeting that we were not aware of. Uh, my client actually approached those property owners, explained to them what he was trying to do. And apparently they got the impression that we were trying to close the road and that is not our intention whatsoever. Our intention is just to abandon, just to vacate the right-of-way. Do the, you know, it goes half to him, half to the people, uh, to the south. Would give him the property he would need to expand. We would grant an easement so to maintain vehicular access, utilities, allow you to maintain it. Everything would stay exactly the same. All it would do would be, would be take that property that is now public and make it private. And, um, it, it, in the odd situation that it's in where you have a private piece of property in between two right-of-ways that are public, it seems kind of odd. So this would kind of clean that up and make it private all the way to, to the intersection. So that's our request. Um, I know that the staff's not in favor of it, but I think that we're providing everything that, that addresses our concerns as well as the neighbors that, to the west that were thinking we're gonna close the road and we're not. So we, we're, we're more than willing to provide, uh, easement document that would be, give you access in perpetuity. And, um, I think it kind of cleans up a, kind of a messy situation. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have and hope that you might approve this request.
Thank you, Mr. Moya. Vice Mayor Cole?
My question would be, when the property owner bought the property, did the realtor not, was this not delineated in the title by the realtor?
That I can't, I, I don't know that. All I know is that the survey that he got at the closing showed that he owned that prop, that that was property he was buying.
Well, that means he has recourse to go back to them because he was given a false, possible information.
True.
Their title insurance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Member Stokoe?
Yeah, my question is, um, if you guys are planning to keep everything the same, what is, can you explain why you are requesting the vacation?
Yeah, so if you look at the aerial, you'll see that there's empty property to the east.
Mm-hmm.
Because he owns now those two lots as well. Because there, there are two separate parcels. There's lots three, four, and five, and there's lots six and seven.
The lots that have nothing on them right now, is that what you're?
So, yeah, so he owns all the way to, to, uh.
The road?
The, yeah, whatever the name of that.
The cross street?
I always forget, yes. Um, so right now, well, even with the, the property if, that he thought he owned, the half of the right-of-way, he was right at the limit for your maximum building coverage.
Okay.
So he couldn't, he would have to get another variance to exceed your maximum building coverage. Now that he owns, doesn't own that property he thought he owned, he's actually non-conforming in two ways. He's non-conforming in maximum building coverage and non-conforming in front setback. So not only did he, is he not, doesn't have property he thought he purchased, he's now n- non-conforming.
Okay.
In two ways.
And I guess if this does get denied, the only, um, option would be to go file for another variance for that, I would assume?
Uh, yeah, possibly, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And, and also if you've seen the right-of-way, you have parking right in, on the street. Very undesirable for, for to have parking backing into a public street. So vacating would eliminate that concern as well. I mean, we can't do a project, we, unless we're maybe in downtown or something where you have street parking, but, you know, usually backing up into a public right-of-way is, is, is prohibited.
Thank you, Mr. Moya. City Clerk, are there any other cards?
Yes, sir. Two more cards. Mary Ballard.
Good evening, council. My name's Mary Ballard. I'm here with my husband, Arden Ballard. And we are the owners of eleven South Brown and twelve South Delion, which is north and south of Orange Street. We have, I think it might be lot one and two in reference to his three, four, five, six, and seven. I am here today to oppose vacating Orange Street to the north and to the south of our properties. Our main concern is that vacating this road could create significant operational and logistical challenges for our business. We rely on Orange Street every day for shipping, receiving. Our main gates located directly on this street. On a typical day, we receive between five and ten, uh, freight truck deliveries, large trucks that have to be offloaded with a forklift. We also ship, uh, large equipment that we require, uh, large double-drop stretch trailers for and cranes periodically, um, sometimes several times a month. It's not daily by any means and it has been less frequent this year, but looking to pick back up again, which is normal. We do not want to assume responsibility for the road maintenance, future road maintenance, I should say, or repairs. There's a real concern that if the road were unmaintained in the future, access could be limited or even closed entirely and that would severely impact our ability to operate safely and efficiently. For these reasons, we respectfully ask the council to deny the request to vacate Orange Street and to preserve it as a public right-of-way accessible and maintained for all current and future users. I do understand that he is stating that we will continue to have use of the road. My problem is if in the future he decides not to maintain it, if we were to sell him our half, I guess is what we would have to do. Because from the way I understand it, when you vacate the road, each person gets half. So if that's the case, is he? So if that's the case, is he even getting enough when he only gets half the road to do the improvements he wants to do? And then also, if we were to sell him our half, and I know he's gonna put it in the minutes or whatever, so that it says that he's gonna maintain it, but what says he, if he decides not to, or decides to close the road or put a gate up? Then where does that leave us? It leaves the city to have to come back to him and fight it. Is the city gonna fight it at that time? Probably not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. City Clerk.
The last card is Dan Johnston.
All right, he passes.
Thank you, and I sure understand her concern. The fact that part of Or- Orange Street is already privately owned, I mean, they could close off the, the road right now. They own part of it, they own half of it to the west of our property. And then there's another third party that owns the, the, the south half of that vacated right of way. You know, we would put that in perpetuity in the easement agreement that we can't fence it off, that we have to maintain it, and, and we would now block access, and it would function just like it does now. You know, what happens west of us, we would have no control over, but that is already in private property. You know, the city's already vacated this right of way twice. So we're really asking them to vacate it a third time. I guess they thought it was a good idea twice. I don't know if I'm gonna have that luck tonight, but the three strikes, it might not, might not be good in this instance. But if for any reason the road is, is the concern, we would be happy with just vacating the north twenty-five feet. And that way, the, because the road's not in the, centered in the right of way. The road's on the south twenty-five feet of, of the right of way. So if you vacated only the north half, the road would still be in the right of way. And then we would just grant the easement for the utilities. And then we would be made whole, and we could actually make a, a nice improvement on the property. So that, we would be happy to, to agree to that. If, if that makes it any more palatable, that kind of gets us where we want to be and resolves the issue possibly for the roadway, because now the roadway would still be on city property. So that's something for you to consider.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Council? Member Nelson?
So Brad, what does that do?
I'm sure I understand the question.
Um, Mr. Moya is suggesting that we only vacate twenty-five feet of the right of way. What does that do?
So looking at the record here, I'm not quite sure where the building is in relationship to the right of way. So I know, he's right that the street looks like, I think it's in the first bottom half of the right, right of way itself. I don't, I think we would need more information as far as where that road is, the street is, and the infrastructure is in relation to this right of way. Actual locations, including where that building is, anything on your site, so we can see for sure what would be vacated and what would not. That I don't have in the exhibit here. But the other issue too, I don't, I'm not sure how that would resolve our concerns about vacating half, about vacating any portion of this right of way.
Yeah.
There's a history here where the city tried to get back what was vacated because we saw that as a, as a, as a mistake. And once you lose it, you, you don't get it back.
And I have to say, you know, I'm familiar with the area. And, you know, our bike trail's right there. And so I hate to give anything up in that area. So, sorry, Mr. Moya.
Member Stokel.
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning that way too, and to Mr. Parrish's point of view, what he said about once you do give it up, you give it up. And I'd hate to give that up because we're trying to give them, you know, being able to, to potentially, you know, build out more that you guys are planning to do. I'd almost rather to, kind of what the Vice Mayor said, I'd look into going back to the title agency and then also looking to see about going for a variance and then going and talking to the title agency to see what you can do to potentially help recuperate some of those funds because of the situation. But to make a decision to vacate the right of way, I just don't feel like is the best decision in this scenario, unfortunately.
Thank you, Member Stokel. What, what a, what a mess, right? Because you have a building that's unconforming in multiple different ways. You have somebody that owns Orange Street. You know, it's, I feel like I keep saying we're always punished from the sins of the past. And I feel like there's gonna be more of these things that we'll need to clean up, especially as codes get updated and, you know, wetland policies get changed. So we gotta figure that out for sure. Vice Mayor Cole.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, whenever you want.
I would like to make a motion to deny the request to vacate the road.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from Council? Seeing none, City Clerk.
Member Moscoso. Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Connors.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Moya, for your time. City Manager? Sorry, City Attorney.
Uh, yes, um, we are coming to the portion of some ordinances and new business items, which are quasi-judicial, and I would like to read the instructions on those. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on quasi-judicial items, which in this case is the third ordinance of ten A, and then also the new business item, twelve A, correct. Persons must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chambers and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of the request will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the City Council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the City Clerk. City Clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the City Council swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Staff and Applicant, please ensure all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card and wishes to speak, please submit a card at this time. Uh, City Clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes.
Okay. Regarding ex parte communications, in the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, verbal or written, outside of the, this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi-judicial item, said visit or opinion shall be disclosed. If written or ex parte communications exist, verify that the applicant has received them and has had the opportunity to review them and is ready to proceed. Regarding the order of the presentation, first council will receive Staff's presentation, followed by the presentation of the applicant. Following the applicant's presentation, the floor will be open to public comment. The applicant may make a rebuttal. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, a party, council, or a staff representative as authorized by council. The council's decision must be based on competent substantial evidence, and pursuant to Florida statute, if the council denies an application for a development permit, the council shall state the applicable portion of the ordinance, rule, statute, or other legal authority for the denial.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Item nine C, which is a conditional use permit application, number two dash two zero two five, has been withdrawn by the applicant, so move on to ordinances, first reading. And that is a small-scale amendment application six dash two zero two five, annexation of Small Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning of Golden Knights Boulevard Industrial. And we have three ordinances, and the City Attorney will read it for the record.
Yes, sir, three ordinances here, one being the annexation, the Comp Plan Amendment, and then the rezoning. The rezoning is a quasi-judicial item. So in order, the first one is an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending section seven, chapter sixty-three dash two zero zero one, laws of Florida, special acts of nineteen sixty-three. By annexing certain property located south of Golden Knights Boulevard and east of Tyco Road, having parcel ID numbers two-three dash three-five dash zero-two dash zero-one dash star dash nine-zero, and two-three dash three-five dash zero-two dash zero-one dash star dash seven-seven, to be included within the city limits, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. For the Comp Plan Amendment, it's an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number six-zero dash one-nine-eight-eight, which adopted the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Titusville by amending the Future Land Use Map by changing the land use designation on approximately nine-point-one-three, give or take acres of property located south of Golden Knights Boulevard and east of Tyco Road, having Brevard County parcel ID numbers two-three dash three-five dash zero-two dash zero-one dash star dash nine-zero, and two-three dash three-five dash zero-two dash zero-one dash star dash seven-seven, from the industrial Brevard County Future Land Use Designation to an industrial City of Titusville Future Land Use Designation, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. And lastly, the rezoning would be an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five dash one-nine-nine-three of the City of Titusville by amending the zoning map, made part of said ordinance by reference to changing the Light Industrial IU Brevard County Zoning District to the Industrial M-two Zoning District on approximately nine-point-one-three, plus or minus acres of property located south of Golden Knights Boulevard and east of Tyco Road, having Brevard County parcel ID numbers two-three dash three-five dash zero-two dash zero-one dash star dash nine-zero, and two-three dash three-five dash zero-two dash zero-one dash star dash seven-seven, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Attorney. That was, that was a lot. Appreciate you. Mr. Parrish?
This is a first reading.
Okay.
I can briefly go over this, or I can just answer questions.
All right. City Clerk? All right. We did it. First reading done. City Manager?
Yes, sir, moving on, there's no item eleven, old business. Moving on to twelve, new business. We have one item, and that is the Harbor Lakes Final Plat. And the recommended action is to approve the final plat covenants and bonds for Harbor Lake subdivision located north of Knox McCray Drive. That's a twenty-eight acre, a twenty-eight lot, single-family home subdivision.
Mr. Parrish?
The staff reviewed the final plat for consistency with the Comprehensive Plan, land development regulations, and recommends approval. Staff also reviewed the covenants of performance bonds and recommends acceptance. We do have the Mylar, it's in my office, and it's available. And we'll have it available for signature pending your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. City Clerk?
We have one card, it's Bruce Moya.
Thank you, City Clerk. Council? Now I'll entertain a motion if nobody wants to ask any questions. Member Nelson?
Move to approve the final plat covenants and bonds for Harbor Lake subdivision.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from Council? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager, I believe we're at petitions and requests from the public, non-agenda items. Seeing none. We're on to Mayor and Council reports. I'll kick it off. There's the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference on December fourth and fifth. I already have to be there to serve on the committee on December fourth. For some reason, they want to charge like three hundred dollars for me to go, but it's up to Council. If you would like me to attend the Legislative Conference on December fifth. So that is my ask of y'all. Member Stokel?
Yes, just to clarify, so this is the Legislative Conference. So in addition, one, you should be there because you serve on a policy committee meeting. This is where we finalize. And there's also sessions that you would be expected to sit in on and listen to. So that's why there's an additional cost, there's meals included. So in case anybody's wondering why there is a charge for that. So I would move to allow us to pay for you to go and attend, and would encourage, as I always say, I would like all council members to kind of go to more Florida League of Cities events because I think they're really beneficial. But yes, I make that motion.
Second.
I have a, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, guys, I just signed up to serve on a committee to give advice. I didn't realize that there was, there's a, there's an add-on. So that's how they get you. All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Anybody from the public would like to weigh in? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Another, we kind of addressed it during the, the wetlands and flood talking earlier is, I was bringing up concerns about Dairy Road, just because it, it is a road that typically floods, and we have residents to the north, but for some reason, not all to the south. And I just want to make sure that we're keeping abreast to that and seeing if there was any way that we could ask the county to weigh in and, and try to fix some of those flooding issues in the middle of the road. They have a, a pipe on the east end, you know, the railroad tracks, you know, where the, the stoplight is, and then also where Wind Dixie is. But that middle of the road is kind of where it's, it's sinking in a little bit. And I, from, what I've heard from residents is, they came by and did some work, and then it got worse. So I wanted to see what you guys thought about us asking the, the county to see what they can do about that. City Manager?
Sir, I can certainly work with Kevin to draft a letter to send to the county manager to ask him to look at those areas that we identify as needing county maintenance.
Thank you very much. Member Cole?
This is the Council.
No, I'm calling on about the issue under, Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would say, I think that's a, a great idea. I know that I'm in contact a lot with the county because of a lot of the flooding. And so I think that, that's definitely important. But I don't know where I was going with that, so never mind. But yeah, we, I mean, one of the things the county is doing right now is we're having to put, put in a lot of, like, service requests. They just, honestly, they don't have a lot of the manpower. And so I am super thankful for our Public Works Department because a lot of the issues we're seeing up in the north end, and it's not, for lack of them trying, it's much harder to get someone out there. And I know that here, whenever I ask Kevin or somebody from our team, you know, hey, could you go check this out? They're out there immediately working on solving that, and that, that's just not feasible right now in the county. So it makes me very thankful for the team that we have. I think they do a great job. It's not perfect, but I know that I can call and, and it'll be taken care of within a day or two. So on top of that, I just wanted to give kudos to our team here in Titusville.
Okay, so do you guys want a, a motion? Or do you want city staff to draft up the letter and provide it back to us? Or how do you guys want to do it? I'll entertain whatever motion you guys make. Member Nelson?
I think just make the motion, have you guys write a letter. I don't know that it needs to come back to us.
All right, I was just asking. Member Nelson makes the motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I got a second by Vice Mayor Cole. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Also, something I provided to you all and to wonder for the public record is the Space Coast Transportation and Planning Organization policy positions for this upcoming legislative session. I think it's important that we all be aware of that as we continue to talk with our state-level officials during this next fiscal year, given the fact that all of our major arteries in Titusville are state roads. So we want to make sure that they're funding that transportation trust fund appropriately. So you guys have that, that's an un-action item. Something I did want to bring up is, at the last council meeting, Vice Mayor Cole mentioned an industrial engineer. And I kind of started doing some, a little more research on that. And I thought it'd be good if we have a conversation about what that could look like for our citizens and our residents, and also our operational efficiencies. As Doge keeps going around and saying that they're finding all this money, I think it'd probably be important for us to see what staffing levels are appropriate. it'd probably be important for us to see what staffing levels are appropriate, where we're missing, what do we need to do to, to be more efficient. Um, so, that would be my ask of, of council, is to, uh, entertain, uh, something that Vice Mayor Cole actually brought up at the last meeting, is, um, looking at hiring an industrial engineer to determine our staffing level needs here in the city. Member Moscoso?
Um, Mr. Bate, is that something you're looking at right now with all of our personnel? I, for one, right now, I'm not, uh, for hiring additional staff just because of the cost, um, but I know that you are looking at and trying to, um, merge some jobs together, so I'm not, I, I would just like to know where you're at in that process, and maybe when we would have kind of a review.
It's a continual process that, matter of fact, I'm meeting with, uh, staff tomorrow, and it's one of our discussion items, is to take a look at, um, ways we can work more efficiently, more efficiently, and, and also reduce some RFT, our, our personnel costs. So, we're looking at that now, and my goal is to reduce, as I've stated publicly, to reduce our staffing levels and, and reorganize, and, you know, once I get my assistant city manager, um, which hopefully will be, decision made pretty soon, I've got ninety-four applicants to wade through, um, uh, that's going to be a primary focus of that position, is to look at, uh, staffing efficiency, so I think, you know, we're, we're working on it right now.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Member Moscoso, but just point of clarification, this isn't somebody that we hire as a full-time FTE, they're basically will, you know, like a landscape architect, provide you a plan, uh, they would provide counsel with a detailed breakdown of, uh, ways we can be more efficient, ways we can streamline, and, uh, just be good fiduciaries of the, the taxpayer's dollar, so this would not be an ongoing, reoccurring expense. Member Moscoso?
Is that something you feel our staff isn't capable of doing right now? I mean, I'm not against the idea, I just think our staff or city manager knows, um, the resources we have, the positions we have, and, I mean, it could be beneficial to bring someone else in, but I wonder if that's something we could do in-house. It sounds, it sounds like you kind of already are, or you're looking to do that when we have the assistant city manager, um...
I certainly like the opportunity to address this with staff before we hire an outside, but, uh, whatever council decides, we'll, we'll go with, but I think we can internally, um, make some adjustments in efficiencies.
So, the, the benefit of getting fresh ideas on a problem, you know, I'm not saying there is a problem, but fresh ideas, uh, also make people, um, more efficient, you know, there could be a different way of looking at a problem that could make us more successful. I'm not saying there is a problem, I'm just saying, if we do not, you know, be thinking critically, I really don't want the state to step in and do it for us. So, again, it's just, companies do this all the time in the private sector, they hire folks to kind of come in and give them a different perspective on processes, and, uh, it's very, very common practice in the private sector. Vice Mayor Cole?
Well, I brought it up, uh, at our last meeting, and the reason I brought it up was because we're talking about a fresh set of eyes coming in. Every organization I've been involved with, including the military, I worked at a university, I worked at the Space Center, we've always had a fresh set of eyes coming in. Sometimes they find ways for us to become more efficient, and maybe not. Maybe this is something that we could wait on until you get your assistant city managing, you look at it, you come up with a plan, and maybe your plan may be a good plan, but I would still like a fresh set of eyes to look at it, to make sure, you know, it may, you may need additional personnel, we may have people that we have to move around, but that's, that, that was the purpose of my suggestion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Nelson?
I'd certainly like to give Tom the chance to look at it first. So, I'm not ready to do it right now, maybe in the future, just not right now.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel?
Yeah, I, I definitely think I would be in favor of it, um, as well, because I do think in, in various, uh, roles that I've had, we've done similar items. Um, I do agree, though, I think Tom hasn't even been in the role a year yet, um, we need an assistant, and I feel like I'd like to get him, like, situated before somebody else comes in and maybe kind of interjects themselves into what Tom might already try to be doing. Um, I think it would be more cost-effective for us to wait until Tom kind of figures out what he thinks will work for him, and then have somebody come in and say, oh, this is great what you've done, but now we can elevate it, but if you're paying somebody, and then Tom's also trying to do it at the same time, I think that it would be a waste of money at this point. Um, I will say also, to that effect, I think it's really timely that we keep it on our radar, just because of DOGE, um, different speeches that I hear and interact with, with people running for office, in positions that impact us at the state level, um, a lot of the discussion is on, when I mentioned like flooding issues to, for instance, state, state officials, you know, I'm concerned about this, well, some of the responses I get back, well, maybe if we had more efficient permitting process, because if it takes, you know, an applicant to apply here, and then by the time they're issued their CO, it's been a year, well, obviously, there's going to be, be flooding concerns because that wasn't taken into effect, and so I, I know that the state is looking at certain things from a different lens, and I think that it, we need to be mindful of that, and then, not to mention the property tax discussion, which will continue, and, again, I think the mindset there is, there is a lot of waste happening at the local level, and so I think that it's very important for us, and I know Tom's already doing this, for us to be very proactive and seeing what we can do ourselves, um, it, it's just good practice. I think that we want to do that as a board anyway, so, um, then we can give, I think, a more accurate and true representation of, you know, this is where we're at, this is what we've done, we're operating at capacity, um, this is how much we need to operate as a municipality, and so if you do this, keep this in mind, we will need X amount of funding, and so we can give truer numbers, but all but to say in summary, um, I definitely want to do this at some point, um, I just don't think now's the time to do it.
Thank you, Member Stokel, and I appreciate everybody's feedback, I just thought it was interesting when, you know, again, Vice Mayor brought that up last meeting, it, it really kind of, I had to think about that and process it, digest it, and I just didn't want it to be something that was kind of in one ear and out the other, I wanted us to have a, a discussion about it, so I thank you for that, and that is my report, so, Vice Mayor Cole, did you want to go next?
Sure, I just wanted to share experience that I had. On Saturday, I had the honor of going up on the Honor Flight to Washington DC. They ran out of World War II veterans, so now they're on Vietnam veterans, but the experience was, it was a long experience, I was up for twenty-two hours, we left, I had to be at Melbourne at three o'clock in the morning, uh, we were greeted by Congressman Herodopolis and a couple of other elected officials for our send-off. Our send-off got a cannon from the fire truck on the airplane, we had a chartered airplane to take us up to DC. We spent the entire day in DC going to all the memorials. Uh, we returned back to Melbourne at, uh, about nine-thirty, quarter to ten on Sunday, I'm sorry, Saturday, same day. As we walked out of the terminal, there were over a thousand people in the Melbourne Airport Terminal that greeted us. They greeted us with flowers, they greeted us with handshakes, they hugged us, and it was just, it was amazing, and I contrast that to, in June of, in, I'm sorry, August of nineteen seventy-one, when I returned from Vietnam, uh, my buddy and I were walking down the streets of San Francisco with our uniforms on, and we were called names, we were spit on, and everything, uh, it was, which was a depressing time, and it wa, it doesn't seem that it was until nine-eleven that our entire population recognized the military and recognized it. Although the Vietnam veterans served in Vietnam, uh, it was because what we were directed to do, uh, whether you believed in the war or you didn't, it didn't make a difference. If you're in the military, you do what your bosses tell you to do, but it was such, I mean, I couldn't believe all these people came out at ten o'clock on a Saturday night to greet some old guys coming back, and you should, it, there wasn't a dry eye among us as we walked through that crowd, and there were also elected officials that were in the crowd that greeted us back, so, I mean, that was, I would think, one of the highlights of my life, and I really enjoyed it, I just wanted to share.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Who would like to go next?
No.
Member Nelson?
I will. So, since we're writing letters to the county, um, I had a conversation about two weeks ago with one of our school board members, and what he was telling me was, in two thousand seven, he ran an environmental club at his school, and they tested the water around Port St. John, ten places, all of it came back with feces. Yeah, I had that same reaction, and I was like, talking to Kevin and Sandy, the capacity of the sewer treatment in Port St. John is at capacity. Um, the county says, oh, no, no, but is at capacity. We have over four thousand septic tanks in Port St. John, and we know from listening to Dr. Jacoby, they leach, um, talking to Katie Delaney, I understand the county has checked all the sewer pipes, they're not leaking, so the question would be, where are all those feces coming from? And has, I think we, I would ask that we, in talking to the county commissioners, encourage them to hurry up with a sewer treatment plant, and also to test the water around Port St. John. I mean, this is twenty, almost twenty years ago, I doubt it's gotten better, and I think of me as a kid, I'm sure Herman and Sarah and Megan, Andrew, we all, as kids, it rains, we run out and play in the puddles, we play in the ponds, and if those are polluted, to me, that's a danger. So, while we're writing letters, can we write another letter and say, please look at this, please test it, um, please, you have a sewer treatment plant on the books, but it's supposed to take ten years to get it, and ten years is just, to me, way too long.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what sewer treatment plan are you referring to that'll be online in ten years?
The county is planning one in Port St. John.
Are you talking, the regional wastewater treatment plant?
No.
Okay, just another one.
It would be nice to have the regional wastewater treatment plant, um, because sea level rise, that would include Merritt Island, the Space Center, um, so that would be the best option, um, so if we, I would love to have us write, write a letter and say, hey, guys, this is, this might be a problem, let's work on it. What do you guys think?
Member Stokel?
Yeah, I had a question, you may not know the answer to, so, if they're at capacity, are they not approving any more development because they're at capacity, or like, how does that work?
According to a friend who lives down there, they are still building.
Okay.
So, everybody has to be on a septic tank.
But everyone has to be on septic, but then we're trying to phase out septic, so that doesn't make sense either.
No.
The we, the state, the state is trying, that's where it's, I'm like surprised by this, um, now I'm...
So, talking to Kevin and Sandy, they were putting pipes in, they've got plans, and when they finish those plans, we should be down to a hundred septic tanks, and Port St. John is going up. So, it upset me, one, because it's bad for the environment, but I'm like, we're putting all this money into fixing our infrastructure, upgrading our sewer system, and, you know, what Dr. Jacoby said, it's like having a sewer spill every day.
So, what are you wanting in this letter exactly? More information that they give us, or for us to direct them to do something? What are you thinking?
More like, we would suggest that you do these things, we would ask that you consider doing these things, uh, we think these things are important.
Did you want to include MEMS while you're at it? Did you want to include MEMS?
We could include MEMS.
I believe their wastewater treatment plan, but MEMS is having a hard time, too.
Yeah. Okay, now, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yeah, is it possible you think that we could all join in on this? I mean, I don't know how near capacity we are, and I probably should know that, Megan, you probably know that, but if, if we do this, and we're saying, dear Katie, or dear county commissioner, here's what we're doing, we're willing to work with you on it, and maybe there's something that we could put a big sewer treatment plant that would be, would help us also?
Well, I figure at the rate they're going, it's going to take fifteen years, so, in fifteen years...
I can't count that far.
I can't count that. In fifteen years, we might need to join, I mean, seriously.
There is a concerted effort amongst the EDC and several Space, Space Florida, uh, to design, build a regional wastewater treatment plant, however, we're a very, very long way from that at this point in time, even if the county secured a hundred million dollars in Department of Defense funding, there's still about nine hundred million dollars short, because it would probably take a billion with the B level of, of funds, so, it, it's tough, tough throw to hoe, but hopefully, we can, uh, just put it on their radar that, you know, we have some, some concerns, and hopefully, we can work together to a solution. Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would say, um, perhaps before we send a letter, just finding out what the capacity is, I mean, a lot of times, people say, we can't build in Titusville, we don't have the capacity, and then we get the information from Kevin, and we do, and so I do know that there are, there are issues, but perhaps we ask, what is the capacity, what are your plans for the future, and then how can we support you, um, as Titusville to move forward? I don't want to, um, point fingers and say, hey, your water's dirty, we're trying to clean ours up, you're not doing that, so I just like to make, maybe make sure we get the information first, and then say, you know, how can we help you, or what, what, what are your plans, how can we move that forward? Um, because I, I don't know that information, I don't know how much development's going on there either.
Yeah, I, I agree totally with you, uh, you know, I'm thinking, we can't direct the county to do anything, and I, I think our letter should be one that this is a concern that we have, and I totally agree with what you just said, how can we help with this situation, rather than, hey, you got, I want to say something else, but fecal matter in your water, uh, you know, let's, let's get together and come up with some kind of plan that we can help each other.
Yeah, that sounded like a motion and a second to me.
Did to me, too.
All right, so I have a motion and a letter for, or a motion and a second for a letter of words of encouragement.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Member Stokel, did you want to clarify?
Yeah, just clarifying, yeah, more of a letter of, uh, concern, and we would like to know, um, what is going on and how we can help.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion from the general public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
So, I have one more thing, this is good, this is good, so, NanoBubbles, we're headed, headed forward.
We are making good progress, we've done site survey, we, uh, are finalizing the contract with the vendor, it, it should be done this week, I'll, uh, I'll, uh, send a copy over to Laurie for her, since she is the benefactor of this.
Yep.
And, um, you know, we're, we're on the, uh, the short runway to getting NanoBubbles installed in the marina for six-month period.
So, do we have a, a party for turning the machine on? A flip-the-switch party? A flip-the-switch party?
Does that conclude your report? All right. Member Stokel?
Yep, just a couple of items. One, just more for informational, as we're thinking about property tax, things that I'm hearing at the state level, some ways that people might be looking at this if we're not eliminating them. I think a viable solution that might be proposed is raising the exemption. So, maybe homestead exemption gets raised to $300,000, for instance. So, I think what we could do proactively to see how many of our residents are homesteaded already, and then, so we can have real numbers and data potentially available to the Florida League of Cities, just to show what does that mean? Like, that's a good idea in theory, but this is what, you know, how much we would be potentially losing. Another thing that has been mentioned, I've heard this now twice, is kind of setting our budget and then working with the property appraiser to see kind of what they set property values at, and then working with the tax collector to then set the millage. And so, we ensure that whatever we request, that is what, whatever we say we need, that is what we get. So, we don't get maybe an excess mid-year. It's, that is your, that is what you said you needed, that is all you're getting. I've heard that idea thrown around as well. And then, the other thing I wanted to bring up, I saw on, it looks like on our Facebook page we posted four days ago, that we're looking for an assistant city attorney. And I think our discussion before was that we wanted to wait until we, we actually had our, our city attorney here and then talk about whether or not we want an assistant city attorney, or do we want to hire on a firm? Because that was a part of a discussion that we had, to kind of focus on very specific items. So, that, I, I just wanted to clarify with that because I saw that posting out there that I, I think that was our direction, that we were kind of going to wait until our city attorney started, maybe talking with her, and then kind of figuring out what might be the best course moving forward financially. That was kind of what I recall from our council meeting.
Our recollection, and we looked at the minutes, there was discussion about outsourcing.
Correct.
Hybrid or sticking to the current. The reason it was advertised was to start getting in resumes, because they flow in slowly and to give Ms. Treasure something to look at.
Okay.
Nobody can be hired without coming to you. That's under the charter that you hire assistant city attorneys as well. So, nothing was going to be done without your, you know, approval. It was just trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit. And since there, according to the minutes, anyway, there was no firm decision not to go this route. It, it was just something that was being explored. So, so, yes, absolutely. I know Ms. Treasure is planning on having that conversation with all of you about, about how she foresees her tenure and what, what her needs will be in the office.
Okay, I just wanted, to me, I, I thought that was confusing because I didn't think that we had yet said that that's what we wanted to do. Like, I know for me personally, I wanted to talk to our new city attorney about it and some ideas, and kind of before we said that we're for certain going to go that route because we had thrown around the idea of potentially having a firm kind of help supplement, looking at the overall budget for the city attorney's office.
And, and, and that will be involved because not only do you have to look at the options, but also the expense. And like we talked about before, you know, outsourcing that backup will, will cost probably more. But again, that's your decision ultimately. And that, and that discussion is going to be had with you before any, anything's done.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Does that conclude your report? Member Moscoso?
Thank you. And to speak to that, I, I did ask Mr. Bate if he could give me how much we've spent in legal fees the past six months, and it's very eye-opening. And so, I don't know if you don't, if you don't mind sending it to everyone, and then you can kind of have an idea of how much outsourcing has cost. And I know that we've been in a really special situation, but it's really helpful to, to see how, how expensive it gets. And then, I have a really quick report. Somebody asked me to share, and I thought this was great. We had a student from Astronaut High School bowl a perfect 300. His name is Lincoln Moyer, and this was back in September. But I just wanted to congratulate him. A perfect 300, that's amazing. Yeah, so, congratulations, Lincoln. I know, I've only done it once or twice, but...
Thank you very much. City manager?
Yes, sir. Just before I go on to city manager report, I just wanted to take a moment to relate to you back, what happened back in 2008, 2009. Mayor, you had a discussion with Congressman Stokel about looking at efficiencies and reducing. Back then, we actually formed a tiger team, and we went from 500 to 430 people over a course of a couple of years. So, we actually got all the departments, we reorganized, we did it ourselves. So, I think, you know, I'm gonna, and as assistant city manager, I chaired that tiger team. And I can tell you, the incoming assistant city manager will be also chairing that. So, we're gonna take a stab at it, and, and certainly, if council directs us to hire some, a third party, we can incorporate that or, or take that as a lead if we're not able to make any headway. But we're, we're on it.
Thank you, city manager. And anything else in your report that you want to...
Yes, sir. I just need, we have one action item on the city manager report. We need to set a date for the special meeting for the CDBG. That's where the nonprofit agencies come in and give you their pitch as to why they would request funding for their various endeavors. And we have three different dates for council to pick. And then, we'll incorporate that into a meeting, and then we'll come back after those nonprofits do their presentations to council back in January, after they're scored and evaluated with recommendations for allocating the CDBG funding. But we need to set dates for the initial presentations. Yeah, the dates are in the city manager report. November 20th, December 2nd, and December 4th, all at 5:30. One's a Thursday, Tuesday or Thursday. And for council to decide which date they would like to select.
Well, December 4th is out, because we just agreed to send me, and we already agreed to send Member Stokel to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. So, the 4th is a no-go for at least two fifths of us. How does...
The 2nd's the best for me, I will say.
Yeah, 2nd works good for me. All right, we agreed, the 2nd.
2nd, yes, sir. The other items are just informational, and I believe the city attorney has one item for action.
City attorney?
Nothing except for thanking you for, you know, allowing me to work with you. I've really enjoyed it. Oh, is that on that, too? Oh, yeah, I'll get that. See, I was skipping over that because I, you know, that's going to be Ms. Treasure's problem. No, I'm, I'm sorry, there, there is an agenda item there. Memo asking for executive session for a litigation matter in the estate of Lowry. And that will be set through, through staff on a date that's convenient to all of you. But according to the state statute, the request needs to be made at a public meeting. That's what I'm doing now. And it will be for, as authorized by statute, for litigation strategy and expenses of litigation, so...
Member Stokel?
Yep, to clarify, are you just looking for approval that we are going to have an executive session because there's been another email that's come around requesting a date for it? And I don't think we all have come to an agreement on that date? Or are you asking for that date as well tonight?
No, not asking for the date. What the statute requires, and it's strangely worded, but it says that the city attorney needs to make just a request publicly that, that an executive session is necessary. The date will be set, you know, and, and there will need to be a public notice, because just like the one we had a few weeks ago, it'll have to start in a public session, retire to the private session, and then come back to the public session. And that will need to be noticed like any other public meeting. So, the date will eventually be advertised once we have it set. This is just getting your permission to get that process going.
So, move to have an executive session regarding the current case?
Yes.
Would be my motion.
I have a motion.
2nd.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any comments from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again...
Jim, did you want to still talk?
Well, no, and, and just, just thanking you, and, and it's, it's been enjoyable. And I know you all know that Ms. Treasure is here. So, I'd like to, you know, call her out, because I told her she wouldn't last the night without being called out, so... And she's, she's been around unofficially this week by getting up to speed and meeting with the city manager and department heads and stuff. And she is definitely in, you know, ready to hit the ground running. And I'm confident that you'll be very well represented. There are still a few of the longer-term projects that I want to finish up. And I have told her I would stay as a, as a resource for her as well. But some of those projects, like the 501(c)(3) we talked about, the council rules we talked about, because of, there was so much going on, those constantly got backburnered. But now, I'll be able to, to get those and discuss them with her and get those to you pretty soon, so...
Thank you very much, Mr. Stokes. Did you want to say something?
Yes, if I may briefly, just wanted to thank...
Oh, please come to the podium.
May I?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in court.
You got three, you got three minutes.
No, and I'll keep my jacket on.
Oh, we just got there.
No, I just wanted to publicly, one, I'm happy to be here, and I, I'm excited to start the job and hit the job running. I have been here a couple of times, just meeting with legal staff and meeting with some staff members here. And everyone's been wonderful, warm and welcoming, and I'm super excited. But I also wanted to extend just a thank you publicly to Jim for what, for, you know, being a placeholder, he says, but I think so much more in representing the city of Titusville and being your legal counsel. And he's been a, a resource for me and has gotten me here as well. So, I thank him for that, and I just wanted to publicly thank him for, for representing the city in the way he has. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Treasure. We look forward to working with you. Seeing no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Adjourned. Thank you.